... meeting. Last week, we had a session where we had nominations for various boards and appointments, and unfortunately, we didn't have a work session. At a work session, we would have discussions and questioning and debate on various items that are on the agenda. And then the second Monday of the month, we would have a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So because of the meeting last week, we're going to have a combination of work session and a regular meeting tonight. For the residents' information, the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. this evening to discuss a number of personnel and real estate-related matters. I would now ask our Township Manager and Secretary Larry Gentile to call the roll.
Certainly. Thank you. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Leavitt?
Here.
McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Garty?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Lewis? Here. Could you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance by Chief Viola?
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Now, I'd just like to turn it over to Commissioner D'Amelio for a moment of silence on the passing of a longtime resident of Harrahford Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so sorry to announce to the township that a longtime resident and one hell of a woman, Peg Giacimucci, passed away on Friday. Peg was 88 years old and did a hell of a lot for this community, did a lot for her neighbors, drove them to appointments, checked on their well-being, just was constantly involved in the community. I think she also was a member of the Senior Citizens Council at one point. She worked a long time at Superfresh and AMP, and her son, Ed, and his sister Margaret are here. And I can tell you on behalf of the township how sorry we are on the passing of Peg. Peg's visitation is this Saturday from 9:30 a.m. to 10:55 a.m., and her funeral mass will follow at 11 a.m. both in Sacred Heart Church, Minowa, and Showborn Roads in Haverford. So I ask that we observe a moment of silence for Peg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, can I just say I agree 100% with what Mr. D'Amelio just said about Peg Giacimucci? She was one of the hardest workers that I ever worked with. In fact, I had a hard time keeping up with Peg, to be honest with you. Good girl. Rest in peace.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next are proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. One is to Ryan Stumpf I, which will be a good Samaritan presentation given presented by Commissioner Hart and our Chief, John Viola.
As many of me may recall, in last fall, we had a fatal house fire. But Ryan is a neighbor, and Ryan, along with Officer Michael De Horatius, helped save two individuals from the fire. We'll go through this, but they were up on the second floor, a young child and the mother. And Ryan was able to catch the child, and both of them were able to then get the mother out of the house. So while we didn't lose an individual in the fire, thanks to Ryan's courage, we had a good result for two other people. So let me just read this. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wishes to recognize Mr. Ryan Stumpf. Ryan observed that his neighbor's house at 905 Larchmont Avenue was on fire. And whereas he and off-duty officer Michael De Horatius observed a female with a young child on the roof of the house. The female told Officer De Horatius that her mother was trapped on the first floor of the residence. Officer De Horatius attempted to enter the residence but could not do so due to the heavy fire and smoke inside the residence. And whereas Officer De Horatius then returned to the front of the house where he and Ryan Stumpf posed the female to drop her child, she was safely caught by Ryan Stumpf. The female then proceeded to jump and was safely caught by Officer De Horatius. And whereas after leading the female and her child to safety, Officer De Horatius returned to the rear of the residence and attempted to gain entry to save the victim on the first floor but was unable to do so due to the fire engulfing the entire first floor. Officer De Horatius and Mr. Stumpf showed outstanding courage without regard for personal safety, which resulted in the saving of two lives. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners and Township residents extend our heartiest thanks to Ryan Stumpf for his selfless dedication to the Township of Haverford. May you continue to be of great service to others, and the best of luck in all your endeavors. Proclaim this 10th day of December 2018.
The next proclamation is to Joseph Rodriguez, attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. He is 5th Ward resident, so I have the honor and privilege of giving this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Harrahford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud Joseph V. Rodriguez of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 19, Bryn Mawr Presbyterian Church, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Joseph, born to the parents of Jose Rodriguez and Narcisa Castro, resides in Ardmore, Pennsylvania. Joseph is a senior at Harrahford High School and enjoys music and plays the guitar. And whereas Joseph has been a scout since the 3rd grade, PAC 500, Cooper Town, then moved on to Troop 19. He has excelled as an Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, Scribe, Patrol Leader, and Crew Chief. And whereas the path to Eagle Scout includes an extensive service project that the scout plans, organizes, leads, and manages. Joseph's service project consisted of repainting of two World War I cannons, planting of new evergreens, and planting of flowers at the American Legion Post 355 in Ballackindwood, Pennsylvania. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Harrahford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners, hereby acknowledges and congratulates you for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Proclaim this 14th day of January 2019, the Harrahford Township Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, Joseph, on this significant accomplishment and milestone in your life. We had two presentations on land development plans this evening. In conversations with our solicitor this morning and our Township Manager and Kelly Kirk, our zoning officer, we felt these presentations would be best suited and discussed or presented simultaneously or along with the resolutions themselves, which are Resolutions Number 16 and 17, after they've been introduced. So I would ask the board if we could make this adjustment, if I could have a motion.
Move.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. Could I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that accommodation. Fourth on the agenda is the Commissioner Committee Updates. Do we have any Commissioner Committee Updates? Hearing done. Item number five, we'll turn to our Chief of Police for the crime update.
The monthly crime report for December of 2018, we had 25 criminal arrests, three juvenile arrests, 124 traffic violations, 26 non-traffic, 158 written warnings, 31 parking tickets written through alert, which is handwritten ones by the officers, 171 automated parking tickets. We had a strong-arm robbery in a block of Tunbridge Road. The son of a resident reports returning from Philadelphia Casino in the early morning hours of December 2nd, being approached in the driveway by a man with a gun and robbed. Investigation is ongoing, but the initial investigation reveals that this appears to be a false report. We had two burglaries in the 800 block of Haverford, where a safe was found laying in the rear yard. An investigation is ongoing at this time. And then 1300 block of Steel Road, where witnesses observed males being dropped off and arrests were made on that. We had one aggravated assault in the 3500 block of Darborough, which is a tourney house, which is two residents got into an altercation. One of them was stabbed. We had 25 thefts and attempts, thefts from autos from December 2nd until December 30th. So most of them were back in the 8th Ward, some of them up in the 3rd Ward, but it's a usual cars unlocked. We had a considerable amount of cash taken in some of the vehicles, but all of the cars were unlocked. Nothing was broken into, so they were all unlocked vehicles. We had a sex offense at the YMCA. Indecent exposure happened inside. Suspect was stopped, interviewed, and charges were filed, cases pending in the court system. We had one bicycle theft from Harrahford College. And, excuse me, we had eight K-9 usages in the month of December. My report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Next is our Township Auditor Update. Ross Anderson.
All right. I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I was in Whole Foods the other day, and somebody was like, "Hey, you, are you Nick Foles?" To what you know, I hope for one day Nick Foles could say, "Hey, are you the favorite Township Auditor?"
Thank you, Ross. Item number seven is our Citizens Forum. We have no registered speakers this evening, but we do have 20 minutes allotted for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item. And if you have something you'd like to say that's non-related, not related to the agenda, we do have time for continuation of the Citizens Forum under item, Agenda Item Number 22. So if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on an agenda item, if you come forward and state your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, if you would.
My name is Lynn Elliott, 704 Polo Road, Bryn Mawr, and I would ask dispensation. I don't know how long I'm likely to talk, but both of these projects happen to be in my neighborhood, and I would like to be able to speak on each of these projects. I believe this is the only time I would be able to speak before you guys would vote on these measures. So if I could...
Sure. Sure, absolutely.
So the first one I'd like to speak about is the Bryn Mawr Medical Specialists Association. If you, I assume you guys have the traffic study, and if you look at page 7 of the traffic study, you'll see on Table 9 and Table 10, I believe, the cars that are expected to come through here. And in our neighborhood, we are expecting from this project several hundred additional cars per day to come through for this development. What I'm asking for is along Railroad Avenue, some kind of speed mitigation that can address some of the traffic issues that are going to come from this. Because for those of you who know Railroad Avenue, that is a speedway. It's a straightaway. And people take that stop sign at the top of Polo Road like it is just a suggestion. And I know, Andy, you hate speed bumps, but I would like to have you consider speed tables like they have out in Radnor Township, where it's that gradual up, kind of a straightaway, and then a gradual down. You don't have to stop to 5 miles an hour to go over them, but they do slow the traffic. And in addition, visual indicators that people cross all the time from Railroad into the polo field, because the public park is right there. Dogs, kids, families, they cross back and forth all the time. You could paint crosswalks from Polo Road over to the polo field as a visual indicator to drivers that they should stop there, that that's actually an intersection. In addition, on the polo field, on the railroad side area, the bushes are just so overgrown, I've actually been stopped by drivers on Railroad Avenue asking where the polo field is. It's right there through the bushes. They can't see that it's there. To trim the bushes back so that they're down to kind of eye level, so people do see it's a public park there. There are sports teams that play there constantly, kids in and out of there all the time. And with all the additional traffic, I think it would be a wonderful thing to try to mitigate some of this impact to the neighborhood. The only other thing I have to say about the medical specialists is I would like to put my objection on the record to something that happened with the zoning code, that they were given a free pass on an entire section of the zoning code by a zoning officer before it could ever get to the zoning board. And I don't think that's appropriate. They, according to the township's own definition, they are a medical clinic. A medical clinic, by our definitions, are three or more medical practitioners. They have seven practitioners. Seven is more than three. They are therefore a medical clinic. In an 01 district, they are only allowed to build there if they get a special exception from the zoning hearing board. But they did not have to get a special exception from the zoning hearing board, because a single zoning officer decided before that that it didn't apply to them, not according to the code. The code says it does apply to them. And I just feel as though, as residents, there are extra protections that could have been included with getting a special exception, such as that some of the impacts of their project have detrimental impacts on our neighborhood. And what mitigation could they provide for those detrimental impacts? Everybody at the planning commission meeting talked about the traffic. Everybody talked about the traffic. If you know that five corners intersection, you know it's jammed all the time. Maybe you could have gotten them to pay for speed humps. Maybe they could have paid for the crosswalks. I mean, that's the kind of thing that might have come up if they had had to have the protections that come into place with a special exception. So that's my spiel about the Medical Specialists Association. The second one is Pets First. Pets First, to me, is a much bigger issue. They are on a residentially zoned lot. They are putting in a commercial veterinary kennel, and they are being allowed to put it only 25 feet from the residential property right next door. They are a non-conforming use, and the code states that a non-conforming use has to have their expansion adjacent to where their current building is. They can't have it adjacent because there is a sanitary sewer line underneath it. But they only have to stay 10 feet in front of the sanitary sewer line. The spirit of the code is to keep that new building as close as possible to where their current building is. That is on the northwest side of the property. Where the original building is, is at 924. They are being allowed, according to the zoning hearing board, they are being allowed to move it to the other side of the lot. According to non-conforming uses, they are not supposed to be allowed to do that. You have to build adjacent to where you currently are. In addition, we presented evidence at the zoning board meeting that a 60-foot-wide lot, this is composed of three 60-foot-wide lots, the 60-foot-wide lot closest to 912 Haverford Road was never incorporated into the other two lots. They were incorporated together in 1945, the ones that would have been 920 and 924. They were re-surveyed by the Yerkey Surveying Company in 1945, when Dr. Chain purchased the property and was the veterinarian there. That building is not supposed to be able to expand on a lot that was not in use for its purpose at the time it first became non-conforming. That's what the statute says about non-conforming uses. They became non-conforming in 1949, long before, as Mr. Greenfield will state, long before all three lots ever became one lot. He says in somewhere in the 1970s, when the county, I think, just kind of put them all together for ease sake of billing them. But that lot was never combined with it. A non-conforming business cannot expand onto a lot that was not being used by it at the time it became non-conforming. So it can't go onto that 60-foot-wide lot right next to 912 Haverford Road. That's where it's being allowed to be built right now, only 25 feet from the residence right next door. And it's a residential lot that it's on. A veterinary hospital is, has a by-right ability to build only in a C4 commercial zone. They have to stay, if they're a new facility, they have to stay 150 feet from any residential property. And they are now being allowed to build that close to the house next door, to the residential property next door. That would be as if you, in your residential property, your residential next-door neighbor were given permission to build a 6,000-square-foot veterinary hospital 25 feet from your property. This is not the appropriate use for a residential piece of land. They have residences on both sides of their land. It is a solid residential stretch down Haverford Road. The fact that it's a busy road doesn't matter. The fact that there's an office building across the street doesn't matter. I am adjacent to that office building. I have a residential property. I can't build a veterinary hospital on my land. They are on a residential lot. They have a non-conforming business. They need to build their building right in front of where their current building is, not move it to the other side of the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. So Lynn, I'm not going to, some of these issues we'll discuss, I'm sure, when we get into the resolutions themselves. But first off, I'm not against speed tables, because we have one, a couple on Highland, and we have a couple on Pamir, so...
If it was on Highland, I thought you were...
Oh, that was, because that was, that was a speed mountain, rather than a speed table.
Speed table.
Table, yeah. And certainly, if this is approved, the final land development is approved this evening, we can certainly look at ideas with the police to try to mitigate as best we can, whether it be speed tables, crosswalks that you suggested, cleaning out the brush, that's certainly something that can easily be done.
And I have to say, sometimes the police will stop at the top of Polo Road, but because it's completely open to look at that, everybody sees them sitting there, there's really no place for them to effectively...
Right. Yeah. And then, so we'll have Kelly Kirk and others address the issues that you raised. I'm not, I don't hold myself out as a zoning expert, certainly. That's why we have a zoning hearing board and a planning commission. We rely on them. They're comprised of, you know, Democrats, Republicans, they're professionals and lay people, and we defer, we try to defer to them as to their recommendations. So in terms of Pets First, again, we'll have a lengthy, I'm sure, discussion about some of the comments that you made, and we'll, I ask Kelly Kirk, is Kelly here tonight? Hopefully, she's, yeah. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to address the issues that you've raised about the non-conforming use, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity for you to speak.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak on an agenda item? Okay, we'll close the Citizens Forum, and we'll move to item number eight, which is the approval of minutes.
President.
Yes. Mr. Holmes.
I move we approve our minutes for the budget and the regular meeting of December 10th, 2018.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. We're going to take a voice vote here, so...
Actually, I have one comment if I could.
Okay.
Who is our Bennett Scrivner? Do we know? Is it Gloria?
Gloria.
I just would ask, if these are official minutes, Mr. Gentile, in Section 5, the Budget Hearing and Adoption, Section A, there is something called an overview, and the last line of the overview before the tables indicates an increase in trash fee, $30 to $227 per residential unit. I would never want anyone to think that we went from $30 to $227. So could we add the words, $30, and then in parentheses, "From $197 to $227 per residential unit"?
Will do.
That will keep all of us from being burned in effigy, hopefully. I had no other comments to add.
So it moved and seconded. Were you okay with that amendment, Mr. Siegel? Yes. We'll just take a voice vote here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Any extensions, I should add as well? Minutes are approved by a 9-0 vote. Next are the approval of the warrants.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move, I move we approve warrant number one of 2019 totaling $3,426,823.90, comprising the General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 13 of 2018 in the amount of General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 29 of 2018 in the amount of $647,153.01. General Fund dispersments, number one of 2019, in the amount of $1,112,73.90. Sewer Fund dispersments, number one of 2019, in the amount of $229,287.11. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment, number one of 2019, in the amount of $121,405.95. Capital Projects Fund dispersment, number one of 2019, in the amount of $337,725.40. And finally, a credit card statement ending December 27 of 2018 in the amount of $6,746.52.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Leavitt. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, our, the warrants have been reviewed by our Township Auditor. Any questions his review revealed have been answered to his satisfaction by Township staff. He recommends these warrants be approved, as do I.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Again, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes carry. Warrants are approved. Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 10, Ordinance P22-2018, amend zoning chapter slash 599 Glendale Road, second reading.
President.
Mr. Wexler.
To make a motion to adopt a second reading of Ordinance P22-2018, amending and supplementing the general laws of the Township of Haverford.
Have a second.
Chapter 182 zoning by reclassifying the zoning classification of a portion of the property known as Delaware County Folio Number 22-09-0094-00, 599 Glendale Road, from ROS Outdoor Recreation and Open Space District to R4 Low to Medium Density Residential District.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Leavitt. Is there any... Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, currently there's a trail that leads from behind this building up through the woods to Hilltop, and I wonder if we could put in a provision of sale to a developer that they extend the trail from that point to Glendale Road on the property that we're going to retain. So it's clearly marked that there's a trail leading.
Is that part of it, Larry, or not?
Yeah, there is a right-of-way, 10 to 12-foot right-of-way for the trail from Glendale Road to back to the park area. That was part of the condition that the state provided to us to change the zoning in order to sell the property.
So we're accommodating Mr. Commissioner Hart's suggestion.
We do, we retain the space for the trail to connect, connects down to Murray Place as well.
Okay.
But are you, you're saying that the trail.
But I'm asking for the, when we sell it to the developer, that we ask that, have the developer connect the trail that now exists to Glendale Road. It's not clearly marked because right now you go, you just walk out of the back of the building.
Their lot will end. The trail will remain township property.
But the trail right now does not, it comes through the parking lot, basically. So when the building's gone, you're not going to see that the trail's there. I just, this way it would be.
Well, there'll be a clear definition because the property line will end there. The easement for the trail remains with properties. Because the parking lot's taken out, it'll be wood chipped and asphalted by, as part of our parks recreation improvements.
I'm asking that we have the developer possibly cover that.
You can ask that, but it's going to be on property he doesn't own. He's not buying that.
Not buying that piece. That's the open space.
Retaining that piece.
Yeah. So that's, that would be our responsibility. Is that right, Mr. Denny?
Yeah.
It's public easement, that's correct. On both sides of the property, actually, there's two public easements that the state wanted to see.
So are we accommodating Mr. Hart's question?
What Commissioner Hart is asking is can the developer actually put in the trail itself, what Commissioner Wexler is saying.
We can ask.
Public spaces there, so the township can put in the trail as a C5, if I'm interpreting.
So we don't need to ask anything of the developer necessarily?
I think.
Well, again, then we're paying to put it in. It's, it's not.
We can certainly ask, and there's no reason we can't ask, but, I'm sorry.
I guess I've just, maybe I'm just missing something, but I think that the motion before us only has to do with the zoning ordinance at this point in time, right?
It's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. So it's just discussion that we're having here, not asking to.
Yeah. Okay, so we can revisit that. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. So it's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? If you could please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
No.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
It'd be eight to one.
Item number 11, Ordinance Number P26-2018, traffic second reading.
What's that about?
I think it's Commissioner D'Amelio.
Oh, thank you. Motion to adopt second reading of warrants number P626, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Stanton Road east side from Briarwood Road to 8.90 feet north thereof.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Is there any discussion? Questions, please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
9-0.
Thank you. Item number 12, Ordinance Number P1-2019, cell tower amendment with T-Mobile.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Siegel?
Motion to authorize the township manager to execute documents with T-Mobile amending the lease agreement for the cell tower at 3500 Darby Road.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio. I would suggest that we amend this motion because the less C is actually T-Mobile Northeast LLC, not T-Mobile USA. So would you accept that?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel and Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
So that's, the less C's been amended. Any other questions or discussion?
Just because we did have a work session with Larry and Blaine.
Yes, certainly Amy's been working on this. There's a pending merger with T-Mobile and Sprint. Part of that, T-Mobile is preparing for the merger. They're identifying current leases that are either conflicting or having redundant tower sites. So T-Mobile approached the township and Amy and Mrs. Cuthbertson have been working with them, and they are willing to extend the lease, which will provide the township with a seven-year additional, additional years of rent. Under the current lease, T-Mobile can exit the lease with only 180 days notification. So the amendment will provide some level of security with an additional seven years guaranteed. And obviously, just like any of our agreements, this lease amendment is being reviewed by Mr. Byrne's office.
Just to add to that, is the initial term a five-year term with two five-year extensions that would come with 12% increases? And the 30, it would be a $36,000 annual payment effective July 1st of this year, so. Does anybody else have any additional questions or?
I assume that the lease terms viewed by the solicitor are no worse than our previous lease terms were with Sprint?
That's correct.
And I, remind me, I know we do long-term leases with some folks. Are there any restrictions on the number of years the township can enter into a lease? I mean, it's not bound by terms or anything?
No, I think we're okay on a lease like this. I know what you're talking about in terms of whether one board can bind another board. Is that what you're talking about? I think in these, in these leases, especially for cell towers, you can, you can extend beyond that.
Any other questions? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
9-0.
Thank you. Item number 13, Ordinance Number P3-2019, traffic first reading.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Holmes?
I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance P3-2019, also known as the "I Told You So" ordinance for Mr. Gentile, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, specifically adding a subsection G to our existing section on parking on public property, making it unlawful for any authorized person to park any motor vehicle in the parking lots of the Haverford Township Municipal Complex, which of course is here, 1010-1014-1018 Darby Road, except for township business.
Seconded.
For clarification purposes, so people are aware, township business does include attending or participating or spectating at township recreation activities that take place here at 1010-1014 and 1018 Darby Road.
That's correct. Who was the second on?
It, sorry, who was? Recreation, all recreational activities, not just township.
Yeah, all recreation.
Right, I'm sorry.
Right, so like if Sacred Heart's playing football or something, they can still park here?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, anybody doing recreation on our township site is here by operation of and permission of the township, so whether it's an existing agreement or by, you know, long-term practice, it's just, the point is that we have official business here in the Municipal Township Complex Center, and we have recreation business here.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
I was.
Commissioner. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
9-0.
Thank you. Item number 14 on the agenda, ordinance number P4-2019, acquisition of 1105 Arlington Road from the School District of Haverford Township, first reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P14-2019, authorizing the acquisition of all real property located at 1105 Arlington Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania, subject to review and acceptance of the related contracts by the township solicitor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Larry, I'd turn it over to you to give some background on this and then.
Certainly, as this board is well aware, we have had a good dialogue with the Haverford Township School Board and school administration for several months now, looking at the possibility of taking ownership of the old Brookline School for additional township use. Potentially, this board could do research. One of the initial thoughts that we potentially could put the revised, a new library there or use it for open space, specifically for township, township purposes. So the school board has agreed to those agreements, and Mr. Byrne's office have been working out the bill of sale, and we will go, go through the two readings and then take, take ownership of the building. It will be the second week of February, if this board agrees.
Any questions? Anybody want to add anything? Commissioner McGarrett?
On the acquisition of the 1105 Arlington Road, the school board wants to sell that to us for a very minimum fee. And basically, over the years, we've had dealings with the school board, and I don't think the relationship has been as great as Mr. Gentile just said, but it was a different board then. But also, I'd like to point out the fact that there's, there's things, like for instance, you mentioned the library. I would like to make sure that there's adequate parking, maybe another special meeting for the people to come and tell you their opinions of what they would like to see there. Also, the fact that the school board, basically with the good relationship we have, I have brought up now, this is the third meeting, I've brought it up, that the crossing guards are out there and there's bitter weather, and we're losing more and more and more of them. Most of them are senior citizens, and I would like to see the school board give them the $2 raise that the township provides to them and, and be fair about that. So that's, that's my opinion on what the dealings are with the school board, and also if the YMCA has any intentions of buying this, I feel that, I feel that that would be inadequate, and they're having a tough enough time taking care of what they already should be taking care of. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarrett. Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah. I want to, I want to comment on two things. One, with regard to the property, no decisions have been made about what we will do with the property, other than an agreement with the school board that it will remain for community use, whether that is additional playgrounds, et cetera. No decisions have been made, and I am sure that this board, as we did with this building and did previously with the library, will hold numerous public sessions. I also just want to comment and thank the school board. I've chaired the school board committee for many years, and it was not until a change in leadership in the last year that we ever met, and that's going back nearly a decade. There has been a renewed spirit of community and an improved, dramatically improved relationship from the top down, from Superintendent Rushee, the president of the school board and the board, recognizing that we, as the board of commissioners and they as the school board, represent the same constituency, the same taxpayers. And it was that recognition that this building was already funded through taxpayer dollars that led to the discussions that led to this transfer at no cost to either the township or the school board, because it is a community asset, it's been paid for by taxpayers' money, whether we paid for it through our school taxes or our township taxes. So I'm very pleased. I think, you know, we have a new spirit of cooperation with the school board, and hopefully that will continue going forward.
I would just like to, well said, I would concur that obviously we wouldn't do anything with that parcel or that property without significant, the opportunity for the public to comment and to give their input. So it seems like a good price and a good opportunity for the township. We can explore how to use it. Certainly, we have plenty of time to explore how we're going to use it over the coming months. So, does anybody else have any comments or questions to raise? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Eight to one.
Larry. Item number 15, Resolution 2113-2019, document destruction.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2113-2019, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public records.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. So this is, allows us to destroy certain documents, and it specifies specifically which documents and how long, what period of length, a period you have to hold those documents. This is an annual exercise, is it not, Larry?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so some documents need to be held, for example, for seven years and others three years, and so it varies depending on the document itself, but obviously, Haverford Township is not an archive and isn't in a position to store documents that are no longer necessary for an indefinite period of time. So this is just an annual exercise that we do. Is there anybody who'd like to add anything to that or any questions?
Well, just to fill in some more color on that, Mr. President, we're talking about accounts payable, accounts receivable, budget and banking-related documents, we're talking about payroll-related documents, we're talking about real estate tax collection-related documents, land development, closed escrow accounting records, sewer billing-related documents, business tax, settlement agreements, liquid fuels records, annual audit and financial reports, which include a report of elected and appointed officials, survey of financial condition and tax information submitted to the Department of Community and Economic Development, and finally municipal lien files.
Thank you for that color. Does anyone else have anything to add? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
9-0.
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number 2114-2019, preliminary land development, Pets First, 924 Railroad Avenue.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I'll read.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. D'Amelio?
Thank you.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2114-2019, approving the preliminary land development for Pets First Veterinary Clinic, I mean Center, LLC, for the property located at 924 Haverford Road, Bryn Mawr, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio number 22-05-00399-00, has been submitted to demolish the existing nonconforming veterinary clinic and constructing new 2,773 square foot veterinary clinic with a 25-space parking lot and an underground stormwater management facility. A one-and-a-half-story residential structure will remain on the property. The subject property is legally nonconforming, zoned R4 Low to Medium Residential District, and is located in the fifth ward. The after said plans were prepared by Site Engineering Concepts, LLC, Southeastern PA 19399, dated November 15, 2018, subjects, subject to compliance with the Planning Commission recommendations.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. I would ask, for purposes of the presentation and discussion, I would ask Kelly Kirk, our zoning officer, start off and make a presentation, supplemented by our solicitor Jim Byrne and our township engineer Dave Pinone, and certainly the applicant is here this evening to also answer any questions that the board might have.
Mr. President, can I just make one comment in between here?
Sure.
And you had mentioned it actually earlier tonight, the, these matters that are before us on these land development, for land development approval tonight, have already been subject to some vetting by the zoning hearing board, as well as the Planning Commission, at which time there were hearings before those particular bodies, relative to some of the issues that were brought up tonight. What we have here tonight, in this instance, with the Petz First, is the preliminary land development, so that, you know, while it says preliminary, I mean preliminary is important because it gives you, it gives the applicants some vested rights, but it will be back again, if it were to receive approval, it will be back with the final approval at another time. I did have the ability to talk to Mr. Greenfield the other day, and told him of the, the way that we like to proceed with these, since we've already had the hearings at the Planning Commission and at the zoning board, is to have our administrative staff, including me, Kelly, and Dave Penone, give you a presentation as to what we understand has happened thus far in the case, and then if there's any questions that any members of the board might have that we can't answer, I think that Mr. Greenfield has some of his professional staff or himself that could answer some of the questions as well.
I'd like to make sure we address the questions that were raised by Lynn Elliott as well.
Okay, and that, yeah, okay, that'd be terrific.
Whether you want to do that, or, I don't know whether you were here, Kelly, when she, you were here?
Sure, yes. Well, I can't speak to the traffic portions of her concerns, I'd have to relay that to the township engineer, but as far as zoning questions, I mean, the applicant has gone to the zoning hearing board twice. The first time, they were denied, and the, it was appealed to the Court of Common Pleas. The Court of Common Pleas upheld that decision, and then the applicant came back with a different plan, with a smaller building, a little bit of a different configuration, which the zoning hearing board found to be, you know, a much more appropriate plan for the lot, as it is in a residential area, and is non-conforming. So, you have to do a little bit of give and take in that kind of situation. The veterinary clinic has been there since, I think, not the early 1900s, if not earlier. So, this is a very, very long existing situation, that, you know, is doing well, and they want to, you know, expand, which is...
Kelly, was this second application that was brought to the zoning hearing board, it was, it was heard and decided by the zoning hearing board, correct?
Correct, yes.
And, and found in favor of the applicant?
Yes.
And that was not appealed, is that the way I understand?
That was not, no.
Okay. And a 30 days has passed since that time?
It has, I believe, yes. And they've recently come before the zoning hearing board, obviously, which, or, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, which is what we're reviewing in the resolution, their comments, the township engineer's comments, in addition to, you know, the portion of the project that was already approved by the zoning hearing board. This is the existing conditions, and I can swap you over, and that is the proposed plan, just the very bare bones version, I figured that'd be easier for everybody to take a look at. There's plenty of parking being provided. The plan, this plan differs from the original that was denied at the zoning hearing board. The building is a little smaller, stepped back much further from the street, so it's not some, you know, big, commercial-looking building right at the edge of the road. And, you know, they, the zoning hearing board and, you know, the, the Planning Commission feels much, much happier with this plan, and thinks it's a much more appropriate design. I, as far as the concern regarding the third lot, it's been in the same ownership for a long time, and, you know, often, those types of lots are merged, either by the county or the, the owners, when that exists. I, I don't think it's inappropriate to say that they're one lot at this point, and I don't believe that they require further reverse subdivision to create one lot.
You talk about the buffer?
No. I'm not sure, the...
Between, the, there's residential property to the right, to this side, and...
To...
What's the landscaping plan for the buffer out, that residential neighbor?
Right, yeah.
Do we know what that is at this point, or?
I don't, I didn't put that up here. We haven't really gone that far into...
Okay, so the Planning Commission will be...
Things that we...
Planning Commission, when you go back to the Planning Commission?
Discuss much further the buffer requirements, and anything else that isn't...
Is that in this resolution?
I didn't bring the, the land, I'm sorry, the landscape plan for the presentation.
Is buffering in this resolution we're considering right now? I don't see it.
I don't think so.
Yeah, but...
A tree needs a review.
Shade tree needs a review, and the Planning Commission?
And, and there are, and again, yeah, there are buffer requirements. There, there is a landscape plan, this, this particular page does not include the landscaping. I just wanted to bring the most concise, clear version of the plan, although actually, I did bring it for the other one.
But, but this will go back for, for a final plan before, before the Planning Commission, where these suggestions can be made as well?
And it's not that landscaping is not already provided for, and hasn't already been proposed, I just didn't use that copy of the plan, or that page.
Lynn had questioned the location of the, of the building, and why it couldn't be back into the left here.
Well, I...
I know the sewer, where's the sewer lateral run?
The sewer lateral is, I don't believe shown on this plan, unless it's, it'd be that, it's hard, it's hard to see on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It is, it's a double, it's a dash line, you're, you're, parallel to the bottom of the property.
Okay.
Correct.
Sewer lateral?
That's a sewer line, that's a sewer main.
And how far would a structure have to be built from that, under, under current?
From practical standpoint, it's got to be, it's got to be, any sewer has a 20-foot easement, so it's got to be outside of the 20-foot easement, and so it's got to be 10 feet away.
Sorry, it's, it's a little easier to see on this one, how it goes through the building.
No, but, go back to the other one. 20, 20 feet from this, from the hash line, right?
Mm-hmm.
That way.
10 feet on either side.
10 feet on either side, okay. Okay.
So, with that, and having to pull that building up so far, if it were to be directly adjacent, I'm, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree with that determination, or that, yeah, determination of the definition, but it, it would make it a very strange situation with that veterinary clinic directly behind what is still to remain the single-family dwelling, and I believe would probably make it, you know, make it more...
Obviously, I mean, the parking lot.
Be used in the future, the house, to be part of the vet clinic was not part of the previous plan.
Okay.
Okay.
If, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I could answer to one more question. There is a landscape plan part of the submission. Landscape plan shows required plantings of deciduous evergreen and shrubs along the perimeter of the property. And we have a landscape buffer ordinance that gives a mix of deciduous evergreen and, and minimum calipers also, calipers of diameter of the, of the tree.
The other comment, I guess, from Lynn Elliott was, she had stated that this could not be cited in a C4, a C4 commercial? Is that what you, is?
It could be an R4.
I'm sorry, could?
Non-conforming, it's in an R4.
Yeah, R4.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing that it's non-conforming. It's very non-conforming, but it's also been there since 1900.
It's, it's, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Let's view it as kind of grandfathered, as a non...
And their, their expansion is the reason that they went to the zoning hearing board. When you expand more than a certain amount, you know, you need to, of a non-conforming use, you need to seek zoning hearing board approval, and that's exactly what they did.
Yeah.
Could I just jump in one more minute, just because it might make more sense to some of the audience, and some of the people that might be watching this on TV? I mean, there's, there's a couple of different components to a, to an application such as this, you know? First, you have a zoning ordinance, and the applicant is supposed to build in accordance with the zoning ordinance, but oftentimes, there's things that don't allow them to do that, or maybe there's a non-conforming use. Those issues are all issues that are taken, taken before the zoning hearing board. Zoning hearing board's an independent body from us, they are quasi-judicial entity, they make their own decisions. So, any zoning issues are really not before this board, they would go before the zoning hearing board, and then they would go to the, if there's an appeal, it would go to the Common Pleas Court. And once that 30 days is up on the zoning decisions, and the zoning hearing board has spoken on an issue, we really don't have any right to change what they say, because then that really takes the place of what the zoning ordinance itself says. The next step in the process, after you have your use completed, and you have, or your, your permission, the next step in the process is the land development process. And through the land development process, we have a subdivision and land development code, that says you have to build according to these specifications, and you have to put in plans, which is what Kelly and Dave were both referring to, and they're pretty specific plans, and those plans are, what is it, Dave, probably 16 sheets or so in this, in this instance?
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, 16 sheets of different specifications that had to be made, and then what happens is it goes to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, which again, is, is a body that's into, they're like advisors to us, we're not advising them, and they're made up of, our, our Planning Commission has engineers on it, and people that are versed in, in, in planning issues. And there's hearings that are open to the public, and you go to the Planning Commission, and then after they get either an approval, or the, or a recommendation of approval, or denial from the zoning, or from the Planning Commission, then they come here. And there's two steps to the planning, there's a, there's a preliminary plan, and there's a final plan. So, what's at issue here tonight is, we already have the zoning, and you heard Kelly say that it was appealed once and sent back to the, to the zoning hearing board again, was brought before the zoning hearing board, the zoning hearing board made decisions, and then there was no appeal from that. So, all the zoning issues are out of the picture now, and now what we have in play is the planning issues, and that's what we're here talking about tonight. And then, even after tonight, it will go back to the Planning Commission again for the final plan, which will be another set of sheets that they'll have to review, and any comments that might be made by the Planning Commission at that time, would then come to us again to be reviewed again. So, I've made many clear...
For that explanation. Solicitor, no, I appreciate those comments, but there's a couple of clarifications that we need to make. Number one, the first appeal from the zoning hearing board was an appeal of a denial, so not an appeal of a granting of the zoning. So, so, while there are people in the direct vicinity of the affected property who are aware of issues that go before the zoning board, it is often, when it comes to this board, that other citizens and other constituents, and frankly, other commissioners, first find out about something that went before the zoning board. So, there, there's a difference between an applicant to the zoning board not getting what they asked for from the zoning board, and appealing that, and being denied, and then they come back for another, you know, they changed their plans, as opposed to zoning board granted somebody rights, an affected constituent went to the Court of Common Pleas, and that decision was overturned, and then changes were made. So, I, I think the comments from Ms. Elliott aren't, I don't, I don't think that's a crack at, at an appeal that, that she's missed an opportunity on, I think she's doing exactly what constituents expect our board to do, which is to hear from constituents when zoning and planning issues come up.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
And second, to the extent that, that it sounded to the public like the Planning Commission was similar to the zoning board, they are starkly different. Planning Commission exists solely for the purpose of advising us, the 10 or 11, or in this case, 20, 34 conditions they've put on this plan, but we as a board can reject all 34 of those, or add 34 of those.
Sure you can, yes, yep, they're purely an advisory committee.
I'm, I'm, there, there was an issue raised about the, about the issue of this being a non-conforming use, and what's the appropriate way for a non-conforming use to expand its use on the existing site where it is? Obviously, Ms. Elliott raised an issue about whether this is an expansion beyond what should be in a non-conforming use setting, and I know that this plan was put in front of the Planning Commission. Would the very same plan with architecture and all that plans be put in front of the zoning board, or would they be approving the concept of expanding the non-conforming use, as opposed to the very specific plans here?
It could be one way or the other. I mean, I don't know what specifically happened in this instance, I know that oftentimes, the plans that are put before the zoning hearing board are not as detailed as the land development plans, simply because you want to get your permission to move forward before you spend all the money on the, on the rest of the plan. So, I, I suspect that the plans that were before the zoning hearing board were not as, were not as complete as the plans that we have before us tonight, although the zoning issues should have, should all have been called out. And sometimes, sometimes a Planning Commission will come up with, with an extra zoning issue that, that you have to go back for, but I don't know that that's the issue here tonight. I think that all the issues, from a zoning perspective, were called out and talked about and discussed, and then the relief was obtained from the zoning hearing board.
Well, I count on the zoning board to do its job, and I just, I just, since a constituent has raised to us an issue about, at least as the constituent has described, a very specific issue about whether non-conforming uses have to grow from the non-conforming use itself, or be adjacent to, or be an expansion of it, as opposed to a location somewhere else entirely different on the property, I certainly would like the question answered as to whether the zoning board had the specific details of the plan to build this property as we see on this, on this presentation.
And that's probably a question, probably the best to answer that would be Mr. Greenfield, if, if we could get him to come and answer that question, as to what was presented to the zoning hearing board.
If you could just come up and state your name and represent.
Thank you, members of the board, Jim Greenfield for the applicants. The, the question of the location of the, well, first of all, the plan that you see before you is almost identical to the plan that was presented to the zoning board. So, the zoning board did have detail regarding the location of the proposed structure and parking, and it, the only thing it lacked at that point that you now have before you is detailed engineering information, which typically is not done until land development because of the cost of doing that, and you don't want to, you don't want to spend that money until you know you have zoning approval.
But location, size, things like that?
Correct.
That's something the zoning board requires, and something you put in front of them?
That's right, and that's exactly how it worked in this case. With regard to the location of the building on the lot, and Ms. Elliott's point about whether it could have been, whether it could or should have been located where the existing building is, or just in front of it, there would have been a practical problem doing that, which is that, had construction taken place directly in front of the existing building, which would be to the east of it, it would have been impossible for the applicants to access the existing building for purposes of continuing the veterinary operation, and they therefore would have had to shut it down during construction, which would have been a considerable hardship. And I can respond to any of the other points that Ms. Elliott raised, if the board wishes me to do that.
I mean, that was my principal concern, so my questions are...
If you would, that would be helpful.
Okay. As, as I think Kelly suggested, this veterinary operation has been on the property for more than a century. The existing building has been there now since 1926, so that's 93 years. It's become dilapidated, it's simply no longer suitable, it's, it's falling apart, it's no longer suitable for the purpose for which it's being used, and in order for the veterinary clinic to remain in the township on this site, it's essential that they build a new facility. It's not, as Ms. Elliott suggested, a kennel, there will be no kenneling operation conducted by the applicants here, it's strictly a veterinary clinic.
They have any kenneling now?
No. The, the new building will be, as I think has been pointed out, 25 feet from the south property line, that's to the right as you look at the plan, that's a greater setback than is required for an accessory structure in R4 zoning. The, the question about whether these lots are separate lots, or whether they're incorporated, is, like all the other issues that Ms. Elliott raised, one that was fully litigated before and decided by the zoning hearing board. We presented evidence to the zoning board that both the county and the township have for many years treated this parcel as a single lot, it's taxed as a single lot, and in fact, Laurie Hanlon-Widdow told us that if we had come to the township with a proposal to build a residential structure on the south side of the property, that we would have had to obtain subdivision approval from the township. So, the township treats this as a single... So the township treats this as a single lot and has for quite some time. So there's no validity to that objection. And finally, I guess there's one other point that Ms. Elliott raised that I should respond to. She said that this is a solid residential stretch of properties. That's not entirely accurate. First of all, this property, as I think we all know, has been, has hosted multiple uses, including the veterinary use for, I think, at least 100 years. Secondly, the portion of Haverford Road between College and Landover has become mixed use over the years. There's some institutional use, there's some commercial use, and there's a considerable amount of office use. Only about half of the properties between Landover and College are owner-occupied residential properties. And if you take a look at the portion of Haverford between this property and Landover, looking at both sides of Haverford Road, eight of the 11 properties are occupied currently by office uses. So this is, again, it's a mixed-use area of Haverford Road. It's sort of an area in transition. There have been numerous zoning opinions and, I think, approvals by this board over the years that have allowed office uses in this area. So we're not out of the box. There's nothing inconsistent with the way the neighborhood exists and has developed over the years. I have, if you have any technical questions of an engineering nature, Dan Meyer from Site Engineering is here. And one of my clients, Gabrielle Hyde, is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would just say that I've been to the facility, I've toured the facility, and I've seen the operations, and they've done an incredible job in operating under, you know, very difficult circumstances. That's less than ideal in terms of facilities, you know, not having heat in certain rooms and, you know, very cut-up space and not very efficient, so.
Thank you, Mr.-
So I think it's, you know, it's, I hate to see us lose a 70-year-old business, certainly. So I concur that something has to be done. Now, whether it's, this is the right plan, I don't know, but certainly something needs to be done, so. Any other?
Kelly, you were finished, right?
I actually did have one more thing.
Okay.
Just kind of housekeeping, really. In the resolution, I wrote that the new building would be 2,773 square feet. I did just speak with the applicant engineer. I apparently missed the little shout-out on the side, so it's more, if we could amend that to be approximately 3,000 in the resolution.
The other thing I would add is that, you know, I did see the first plan, which I didn't like at all, because it was, as Kelly said, it was literally right on top of the road. And it's also two-story, so the fact that you're taking one story below ground and making it one and a half story, it makes it far more attractive. I'm concerned about the buffer between that structure and the immediate neighbor. So that's one of my concerns, because I want to make sure, I know he's concerned about his property value, as anybody would be. So it's open to question as to whether, you know, this hurts his property value or not. It's unknown, but to the extent that you can buffer him out.
We're attempting to do that as best we can. We have, we've provided for a row of trees to the south side between the proposed structure and Mr. DeAngelo's property there. DeAngelo's actually owns three properties to the south, the northernmost of, northernmost two of which are rented out. They live in the third property over. So we're going to plant extensively on that side. We're also going to plant on the west side. And there may be some additional landscaping done along Haverford Road. I should also add here that we have to get a PennDOT permit for this, but because we're going to be improving the situation where the property meets Haverford Road, we expect that to go pretty well. We're going to be widening the current driveway to make it so that two cars can pass side by side going in and out, which is critical. And there are also a couple of additional curb cuts to the south of the current driveway, the current main driveway, which are going to be eliminated. If you're familiar with the property, there's a small parking area up near Haverford Road to the south of the main driveway, and that's going to be eliminated.
Could you consider a mound, kind of a mound landscaping as well? Is that something?
You mean a berm?
A berm, yeah. Sort of.
I suppose it's something we could consider, sure.
That's something that would be-
It does add the cost. If you think it's something that's necessary to help shield the property, that would be fine. But I should point out that you have office buildings all over this neighborhood, none of which are set away, are protected by a berm from, you know, for aesthetic purposes. So I would respectfully suggest that it would be our preference that we be treated the same as those buildings in that respect.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Dave?
I have no comments.
Anything traffic-related?
Traffic's actually pretty innocuous. I don't think there was a traffic concern brought up.
Okay.
I believe that was the other application, traffic discussion.
Okay.
We had provided a traffic report in connection with this, with this application, which, our report was done by Frank Tavani, was also presented to the zoning board, and traffic was not an issue really before the zoning board at all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greenfield. Anyone else from the board have any comments or questions? If not, we call a roll.
Certainly, Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Nine zero?
Okay, we turn our attention now to Resolution Number 21-16-2019, Final Land Development Bryn Mawr Medical, 986-996 Railroad Avenue. Once again, we'll have Kelly, you'll be presenting. I don't know whether, Jim, you have any opening remarks?
You know, the remarks would be basically the same, except that this is with a final development rather than a preliminary approval. We do have Kristen Pianzio here, who represents the applicant, and we'll give you an opportunity to speak to us once Kelly finishes her introduction, okay?
Mr. President, can I read the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion to a doubt Resolution Number 21-16-2019, approving the final land development plan for BMM SBA Railroad LLC for the property located at 986 and 996 East Railroad Avenue, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number 22050091700 and 22050091800, has been submitted to development, to develop the combined 1.5808 acre lot with a three-story, approximately 20,439 gross square feet medical office building, together with 65 parking spaces and other associated site improvements. The subject property is Zoned 01 Office District and is located in the 5th Ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by Robert E. Blue Consulting Engineers PC, Blue Bell PA, dated May 4, 2018, and last revised on November 16, 2018, subject to compliance of the planning commission.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGarrett. We've seconded. Now we'll have discussion and presentation, and start with Kelly, Kirk Arzonian Officer.
Okay, well, with this project, we've also been kicking it around, the planning commission and zoning hearing board for quite a while. I actually think this one might go back, not quite as far. So this plan originally came to the planning commission as a sketch in November of 2017, excuse me, where Ms. Elliott did voice the same concern about the determination of the medical office versus medical clinic definition. That determination was made by the previous zoning officer, Laurie Hanlon Woodup, in writing to the applicant. So with that, an appeal period is well past, and, you know, there were discussions regarding that. So at this point, whether it is a clinic, or, I mean, it's not a clinic, but that argument is moot. It's already been determined in writing. As far as the, what else did we have? Let's see. There was one note of a revision. The original resolution that was sent to the board had a handful of waivers requested after speaking with Mr. Byrne and Mr. Penone. We have discussed and decided that the waivers were not applicable, save for the one from Chapter 160-5B8, requiring permanent survey markers, so nothing huge.
This resolution that you handed me, Kelly, is the new resolution?
Is the revised with just that one waiver.
Okay, so I can hand this out to everybody here?
Yes, please. Okay. Now, there were waivers requested during preliminary, which was approved in July by the board, and that included, I thought I had it right on top, but I don't, waivers from the widening the right driveway on some of the roads, widening the roads themselves, one sidewalk waiver for Railroad Avenue, no, I'm sorry, County Line Road, for where the wall currently exists. As a condition of approval by the zoning hearing board, the wall must remain. With that, there is nowhere to put a sidewalk. Between that wall and the road, there were multiple other discussions. It was actually discussed at length multiple times at the planning commission of how we could squeeze in some sort of pedestrian walkway, and it just was not feasible or safe. So with that, we're keeping the wall and-
Does it include the window as well?
I'm sorry?
Include the window?
I believe the window is still staying.
The window would stay as well?
Yes. That's mostly everything. I did actually include the landscape, oh, an overlay, and that's the existing, where the building, and then that brown circle is the parking area. And then this is a landscape plan, which I don't believe is totally final. This might, this might not be a-
As the existing trees, the existing trees, I know the shade tree commission reviewed.
Has reviewed, I guess.
And they, which tree, how many trees do they want preserved?
If I could-
We know which ones are new and which ones are existing.
If I could read the writing on the plan from here, I could tell.
A lot of, yeah.
I'll put it up in my head, I don't know what to worry.
Mr. Pianzio might know that, right? Five, five trees?
They wanted to preserve, and they're going to do that?
Yeah.
Any, any else, Kelly?
I don't think so. I think I addressed most of the concerns so far.
I think this, I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. McGarrett just asked me, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't think we've met before, sir.
It's with me, it's just, are you over there?
Okay.
Wait, you can't wait to exit.
I figured that, but I wasn't closer to the door.
Yeah, why don't you, I'm sorry.
Because we're not going to be able to, this is actually taped, so you-
Yeah, if you could state your name and repeat your answer.
Leon McGuire from Blue Consulting Engineering. I'm a civil engineer. There were, there were five ash trees on the site that were struggling due to the Emerald Ash Borer, and a arborist was hired to determine a course of action to help the trees possibly survive. So rather than showing them to be removed, we're showing them now to be treated accordingly. That was it.
Okay. Thank you. So I think the applicant is, because Lynn and I had met with you a while ago, and one of the issues that was raised was the ingress and egress off of Haverford Road. And now we have a right-in, right-out versus the old-
It was raised because we didn't have a-
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. So I think the plan, the plan is better. I'm still a little skeptical. I'd like to hear about the traffic impact, because I am concerned about Railroad Avenue and County Line Road and the impact it's going to have on those two, on those two roads, and also the Polar Road and other neighborhood streets. So that's my primary concern, is the, is the, is the traffic issue.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Pianzio with Hamburg, Ruben Mullin, Maxwell and Lupin. I was here before you for our preliminary plan approval. As stated, we're here for final. The only issue is an additional waiver having to do with putting the pins in the existing wall instead of the property corner. So we've come a long way. As you're right, Commissioner, we did have a very different plan when we went to the planning commission with our sketch back in 2017, where we met Ms. Elliott as far, as well as other residents who are interested in this plan, considered traffic to be one of the major hurdles. If you look behind you on this plan, this ingress and egress, right-in, right-out, only off of Haverford, did not exist with our existing, with our original sketch plan. There are many comments about the residential neighbors that are to the south of our property, the use of the side streets, not only for the traffic ingress and egress, but for overflow parking that may come out of this property. We are required to have 42 spaces. We went well above and beyond that with 65. We went to the zoning hearing board so that we could have the room to put those extra spaces in, to accommodate our neighbors, and make sure that the patients and those that visit this medical office building do not park on the side streets. We also took into-
For one second, I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just to edify me, it's not in the resolution. What was it you had to go in front of the zoning board for, and what did they rule?
So after we went to the planning commission, we added this right-in, right-out driveway on Haverford, which added to our zoning application, which consisted of parking within the front yard. This property is bordered by three frontages, therefore we have front yards along three sides. The existing parking is nonconforming and exists along this area here, County Line and Railroad Avenue. So we went to the zoning hearing board to request an interpretation that not, that nonconformity could persist and/or variance in its stead to allow the parking to remain in that area. We also needed a variance because we listened to the neighbors and added this right-in, right-out off of a PennDOT road, we had to move the building forward towards County Line. That required a variance for a setback from County Line Road. We also asked for an interpretation and/or variance for the setback from Haverford Road. There's a provision in your code that requires an additional foot every, once you get over 35 feet, you have to add the setback for every foot your building is higher. Our building is 42 feet, so we needed a 42-foot setback. There's another provision of your code that wants uniformity along the frontage and asks us to take an average of those setbacks, so that was in front of the zoning hearing board as well. The zoning hearing board was well-attended. Ms. Elliott was there, she participated in the hearing, she asked for party status, she presented evidence, she asked questions, as well as a number of other residents who were very interested in the wall and the historic nature of the features. So all this was completely vetted. This addition of this ingress and egress off of Haverford added about $250,000 to the project. And we did that in response to the residents because we listened to them. And that was the reason why we went to the planning commission with the sketch to begin with, so that we could be mindful and thoughtful as we put this plan together. We are merging two properties as they exist. There's two. We're merging these two, so there's not going to be two businesses on this property anymore. What you see is what you get. There are three existing curb cuts off of Railroad Avenue. We are consolidating them into one. Our ingress and egress off of Haverford, that's a PennDOT road, we did a traffic study, we submitted that to PennDOT. We need a PennDOT approval for that permit. That is all under review and subject to their approval. Much has been done with that driveway- Our ingress and egress off of Haverford, that's a PennDOT road. We did a traffic study. We submitted that to PennDOT. We need a PennDOT approval for that permit. That is all under review and subject to their approval. Much has been done with that driveway because of its location relative to the intersection. There are improvements that we're gonna have to make to that signal at Haverford and County Line in response to those comments from PennDOT. So traffic is a major part of the...
I understand that signal is actually owned by, owned by Lower Marion Township. And Lower Marion Township has applied for a grant for an adaptive traffic signal at that location. So that should be sometime this year, right, Larry?
Yes.
Should be installed. So that's a real, that monitors traffic in real time and adjusts the light accordingly. So just for your information.
Thank you. Did the zoning board, did the zoning board grant you the variances you needed?
Yes, and with conditions. What Ms. Lily, what Ms. Elliott referenced was if we asked for a special exception, the board could have attached conditions. We asked for variances, which are of greater moment than a special exception, for which conditions are better suited should anyone try to appeal them. They did attach conditions to our zoning hearing board relief, including the retaining that wall. And the glass panel as part of the wall is going to take some creative demo of that building to retain that. We agreed to do that. They also limited our truck loading and unloading was one of the variances that we requested because it's a medical office building. They don't have deliveries, per se, to need such a large loading and unloading. So they restricted the truck to like a box truck, a FedEx or UPS kind of truck. And that we adhere to the plans that were submitted to them, that we build in substantial conformity, all of which was not appealed and, and stands today.
Can you, Dave, did you?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Do you have any additional?
I don't have any other questions.
Did you have a chance to review the traffic study?
We did. Traffic study was prepared by a firm called Traffic Planning and Design.
And what did, what did they find?
Well, the, the prediction of trips out of this type of facility is fairly well documented. It's a medical office building. We've talked about how traffic generation is predicted by people like, like us and the applicant. So the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE, comes up with the traffic projection. The projection on a day, on a day basis, full, a full day, is 700 and some vehicles, trips, which is actually half the number of vehicles. So that's 706, 760 trips. That's half go in, half go out. The AM peak is 50 trips. The, the PM peak is 75 trips. So in the AM, you'd have about a little less than one a minute going in and out of the site. In the PM, you have a little bit more than one a minute going in and out of the site. It's, it's, it's projected for the majority of the traffic to use the front entrance of Haverford Road based on our, our experience and institutional knowledge. We think that's a reasonable projection. PennDOT will also look at this traffic study to see if that's also a reasonable projection. And the modifications, the design of the intersect, the design of the entrance, and any modification signals will be adjusted accordingly.
So you're assuming the majority of the traffic's gonna be coming westbound on, on Haverford Road?
Haverford Road, yeah.
How do you make, how do you, how do you make that assumption? How do you make that assumption?
Let me look at the distribution. Forty percent north, 35% south.
North, south?
Yep.
And then the other coming, coming from maybe Lancaster Avenue, New Bryn, Bryn Mar area, down County Line?
And on a County Line, it's about, it splits out 10, 10 and 15, about 10% on County Line, 10% Landover. So 35% coming from the, I'm sorry, 40 from the north, 35 from the south.
Okay. Anything else to present?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Questions? Commissioner? You always have a question. You do, at least.
Well, I, I'm concerned about being out of order. I just noticed Ms. Elliott was a little bit exercised over the last thing Mr. Panoni said, and I didn't know whether we wanted to invite any other comments since this has become, you know, since we've, we have followed an unusual format here, but...
Yeah. I think it's better that we not...
It's your run. Yeah, it's your show.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Lewis, I just have a question. You mentioned there's 62 parking spots for the facility?
Sixty-five.
And how many employees will work in the facility? Roughly?
We have 28 staff. Seven, seven doctors. There's no PAs, no nurse practitioners, 28 staff, Monday through Friday, nine to five.
Any, any other comments, questions? Okay. Call a roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? And Mr. Lewis?
No.
That'll be eight to one.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, before we move on, could I, for one second, have a minute?
Yes.
Could I have a minute? I, I just wanted to note, I, it's, Ms. Elliott raised, you know, good issues to our board, and it is our board's job, even at this late proceeding, even after a zoning board has, has ruled on issues, and even after a planning commission has made its comments, we still remain the place for our constituents to come and be heard on issues that they have about developments that are in our township. And it's very important for us to balance the concerns of individual or groups of constituents with our township's need to make sure that we have predictable outcomes and that we have, you know, boards that we count on, and then we trust those boards to do their jobs. So I do appreciate Ms. Elliott's concerns, and I don't want her to think I took, any of us take these votes lightly. And that I thank her for raising the issues that, for me, raised issues that needed answers. And within the context of what I was able to do, I, I got answers that at least satisfied me enough to approve these projects. But did not want Ms. Elliott or any constituent that comes before us to think that their discussions or complaints or comments or observations fall on deaf ears. I hope this was some evidence that they do not. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now turn to resolution, item number 18 on the agenda, resolution number 2118-2019 subdivision for 599 Glendale Road. Commissioner Wexler?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2118-2019, approving the subdivision for Haverford Township 599 Glendale Road, Havertown, Pennsylvania 19083, Haverford Township Delaware County, and known as DC Folio number 22-09-00094-00. Has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 105, 438,000 square foot lot to create four lots as follows. Lot number one, approximately 68,759 square feet. Lot number two, approximately 9,000 square feet. Lot number three, approximately 9,024 square feet. And lot number four, approximately 18,655 square feet. Lot number one is proposed to remain recreational open space, with lots number two through four to be rezoned to R4 low, medium residential. This property is located in the ninth ward. Before said plans were prepared by Panoni Associates Philadelphia, Pennsylvania dated November 5, 2018, subject to the recommendations within the resolution.
Have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hart.
Again, this is, follows up on the second reading of the resolution of that previously mentioned space to then subdivide it with the intent to put it out to bid at auction to build those houses so that we have contiguous residential properties there, along with the appropriate easements for the park and trails.
Kelly, anything you'd like to add?
Sticking, looking at me yet?
Keep going.
Sure. So as, as Commissioner Wexler mentioned, this is coming on the tails of the rezoning of the property, or of a portion of the property. The rear of the property saying ROS, recreational open space, and the front of the property being R4 residential. With that, now that we have a second reading of it, this is the subdivision plan for three residential lots. And then again, the recreational open space remaining in the back with a little tail of a piece of property going towards and connecting to Glendale Road, as required by DCNR for the grant that was originally used to purchase this property. That needs to remain and needs to have access. There is also additionally access, I believe where the, the footpath, the unofficial footpath is, is actually not where that is shown, or even really part of this property, but part of this unopened paper Bonner Road here, which is not part of the subdivision. I would like to mention that, or remind the board that during the zoning amendment hearing that the only person that showed up, their one question was whether we would be looking to create an actual path through that tailpiece on the open space property, or if we were hoping to, keeping it the same as it's been for all these years. And he was told that we would be keeping it the same and didn't have any plans or intend to open that anytime in the near future. So that was just a little reminder about that. But otherwise, you know, they all exceed the minimum size of the, for R4.
It's a trail.
There is some steep slope in the rear, a little bit of...
Footpath.
Blood plane on the one side, but for the most part, I mean, that's why the lots are so big, so that it kind of make up for those, those little hiccups on the property.
Pretty good one, though. Thank you, Kelly. Does any, anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is minor, but when you read the resolution, the only recommendation listed is to widen the proposed access to the recreational space from 10 feet to 15 feet. But our resolution suggests that we are approving it subject to recommendations with an S. And since it's not plural, I would suggest that we remove that in, subject to the recommendation, so that there's no confusion.
That seems to make sense. Anyone have any objection? Can whoever made that motion?
Accept that.
Accept that, and whoever seconded, accept that? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Siegel.
I apologize with, with that.
Catch.
One recommendation of the planning commission, opposed to the four-page lists from the two other ones, was that the board consider possibly widening that little tail portion of the open space from 10 feet to 15 feet in the event that, in the future, there were to be a trail there. Yeah, I just to clarify, man, I, that's, that's been used as a trail, so I'm not... Not that, not that portion of it. It's the portion above. And not a necessarily improved trail at the moment.
You're talking about the, the portion in the rear that's a steep slope?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Denny?
Bring up the same point. I'm gonna bring up yours first.
Mr. Panoni.
The foot dimension, and Tim, you tell, I think you might be going down the same road, that comes from the DCNR require, requiring deeded access to the back of the property. The suggestion of the planning commission to go to 15 feet, I'm not saying it's a bad one, but I think, I think it may be worth vetting that with Tim because the whole point of the 10 was to satisfy the DCNR on their requirement to allow us to subdivide the property. I don't think there's ever an intent to build anything there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's two things that I just want to make clear that, on the paper street there, as Kelly pointed out, you know, there's, there's room there for a trail, and we definitely want to connect that to the existing pathway that's there. And as Dave pointed out, DCNR initially rejected the plan, but then when I showed the 10-foot easement on the other side, and they said, okay. And they definitely want it to be that the public is aware that those are public easements. You know, that, you know, that that should be clearly identified as easements on both sides to get that open space in the back. I just want to make that clear. Dave's right, DCNR wanted to see at least 10 feet. I don't think they would complain if it was 15, but I, I just want to make it very clear that, that it's intended to be obvious to the public that that is public access to that open space on both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. And thank you, Dave, for that clarification. Any other questions, comments? If not, if you could call a roll, please.
D'Amelio?
Commissioner D'Amelio was not feeling well.
He didn't, wasn't feeling well.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
This is eight.
Thank you, Larry. Item number 19.
Number 19, KCBA, Haverford Township Municipal Building Water Leaks Invoice. Motion to authorize a payment of $27,001.45 to KCBA for work related to other water intrusions for the new building.
Second.
Larry, if you could provide us with an explanation?
Certainly, this board's well aware that...
Larry, could I cut you off for a second? I'm sorry. Not sure how much, I'm not sure whether or not this should be subject to an executive session. In fact, I think right now we need to call one.
Okay. I would agree.
Hey, we'll go into executive session.
What is it?
For a few minutes to discuss... What is a, oh, we're not sure we're live.
She gets back, we're not live.
Morning light is on.
Not live?
I think we're on.
Knock on the door?
Yep, she's good.
Okay, we're, we are live. Okay.
We are on.
So, sorry for the interruption. We went into executive session to discuss a real estate matter related to item number 19, and I would defer to our solicitor for his comment.
Yeah, I don't think that much more explanation should be, or discussion should be had on this matter. I mean, some of it is subject to, as you said, real estate privilege, and the, and the other is, is related to, it would, would probably fall properly within a attorney-client privilege. So my instruction is that we would identify that the funds to be paid will be paid from our capital fund, and that it would be for repairs to the building, and I don't think that much else needs to be said at this point.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio is still absent. Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Seven yeses, and one no, and one opposite.
Question carries. Item number 20, purchased police department.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Oliva?
Motion to authorize the purchase of five 2019 Chevy Tahoe police vehicles from Han Drew Chevrolet, 2005 South Marcus Street, Mannheim, PA, under PA Coast Guard's Contract 13 for a total purchase price of $194,725.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Oliva, seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. Any comments, Larry? Any discussion, questions? Chief, any?
Give you an update on the vehicles?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll give you a little history on, on the vehicles and how we ended up with the Tahos over the years. We started, we have a total 23 marked vehicles. Twelve are marked patrol units, two are marked sergeants' units, and six are marked as special operation units, and with three spare cars, which we keep for. Court cars or when one or two vehicles is down for repair. Ford stopped production of the Crown Victorias, which we had for years in 2011. We started buying Ford Explorers SUVs in 2012. And at that time Chevy did not make an Explorer. It was a four-wheel, a four-wheel drive police package. In 2015, Chevy then offered a four-wheel drive police package Tahoe, which we started purchasing. We found the Explorers did not hold up as well as the Tahos, which are based, the Tahos are based on a truck body. We had trans problems, and, and when they were in a minor accident, we had extensive damage with the car because of the frames. Wasn't a... Wasn't a full frame on the vehicle. We have stayed with the Tahos for safety reasons, interior size, equipment placement, power comfort, we have more prisoner room, which is a safety for the prisoner and the officers, and the rear compartment, which is considerably larger than the Fords because the amount of equipment we continue and add to the vehicles. I did some research on the new Fords that are coming out because they have changed, completely changed the design of the police Explorers and the regular plain Explorers. They don't start production until mid-May with possible delivery towards November or December, possible delivery. I also looked at the Ford hybrid vehicle, that adds another $10,000 to the price of the car, and they won't be available until sometime after the standard vehicles are in production. The price of between the Explorers and the Tahos is through $2,700 difference. The Tahoe, excuse me, the Explorer is a full-time, all-wheel-drive, where the Tahoe is a two-wheel full-drill, four-wheel with an electronic switch to turn on and off. The Chevy has a 5.3 V8, which gets 18 miles to a gallon, and the Explorer specs is a 400 horsepower, 3.3 V6, it gets 19 miles to the gallon. So on spec-wise, the Chevy is bigger and gallon per mile is about the same, give or take a little bit. So we like to stay with the Crown Vics, I'm sorry, not the Crown Vics, the Tahos, we are happy with them, and when an officer spends 12 hours in a car, there's gotta be some comfort level there, so, and that's why we went to the Tahos and we continue to go with them. And remember, as we move cars from the police department, we move them to detectives and then move them to township units up here, so they get 200,000 miles on them before we get rid of them, so.
Chief, is there any opportunity, is that hybrid that you mentioned, is that a Tahoe hybrid or?
That hybrid, Tahoe does make a hybrid, I didn't even research that. I don't know if they're still in production, to be honest with you, but the Tahoe, I'm sorry, the Explorer hybrid was just announced very recently, and like I said, they will not be in production until later on this year. And typically, we would never buy a car that has never been tested in the police services. Our concern with that is...
First-year.
Batteries, what happens when the vehicle is parked or when the officer is sitting on a traffic detail for a period of time? What's gonna run all the equipment? Will those batteries hold up? So we like to give it at least a year before we move into any type of new vehicle.
Are there any other alternative fuel vehicles that are available on the market that you know of?
There are aftermarket propane, you can take any, any kind of vehicle that we purchased now and make it a propane vehicle, but with a police vehicle, you're losing considerable amount of space to put the propane tank in the back, just as you saw with the township trucks that we have purchased. They do, they do take up a lot of room, and then we have to get out and gas at a different area than the police station. But we continually, continually look at those, and I expect in the next year or two, those hybrids will become more available, and once they're tested, we'll have a better feel of what's, how they're gonna hold up. A lot of money to put into something we're not sure of yet.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Anyone have any questions for the Chief?
Yeah, and Chief, just to follow up on that, I know you've talked about this before, but we purchased some vehicles each year typically, correct?
Yes, every, every year we keep, we keep moving cars, yes.
So it's, you know, the opportunity if something is not going on into production until later this year, for this year, it might not be practical purposes for us to purchase it, but we'll obviously keep, continue to monitor the potential for hybrid vehicles, for police vehicles, moving into 20, 20 and 21.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Sort of a question.
Anyone else? Larry, could you please call a roll?
Certainly. Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Eight to zero?
Thank you, Larry. Item number 21, continuation of the 2019 appointments, Environmental Advisory Commission to your term, Ward 4. Commissioner, we have a name tonight or?
Now I will defer.
Okay.
Could I, and I'm next, yeah, could I ask the solicitor a question? Mr. Solicitor, or Mr. President, both of these appointments that remain, Environmental Advisory Commission and Senior Citizen Advisory Board, these are appointments by individual commissioners, not subject to the vote of the rest of the board. And while I don't have names tonight, I'm waiting to hear from two people who've previously served on my behalf and would like to, as soon as they say yes, I'd like to send them to the next meeting. Is it enough that I appoint them and post on Facebook that I've appointed them and simply ratify my, my decision at the next public meeting, or is it not effective until I say their names out loud at one of our commissioner, regularly scheduled commissioner meetings?
I would assume the latter, but I will defer to you, Solicitor.
I mean, these are individual appointments by, by commissioners, so it's, it's the kind of thing where you're, you're going to pick the person and that's the person that it's going to be. I would think that, you know, traditionally, we've always done these at a public meeting and had a motion to approve what each commissioner does, or at least to make it out in the open for everybody. I think, I think what we really want to accomplish here is to get, get the persons on the board and get them working as quickly as we can. I mean, I, I think we should ratify it. I think, though, that if you want to send them to the meeting, they're only, I'm not going to say only, that was a bad choice of word, an advisory, it's not a word that's making a decision. So from that respect, I think we can ask the person to go to the meeting and participate before, before the next meeting when it's ratified. But I do think we should continue the process of allowing everybody, you know, having it here.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not interested in departing from the process at all. I just wanted to make sure I didn't bring down the wrath of God were I to send these people to the next meeting before our next regularly scheduled commissioners' meeting, where I could announce to the world that I had reappointed these folks, yeah.
You certainly wouldn't bring down the wrath of God. You'd down anybody else.
Anybody, Commissioner Siegel?
Just a point of clarification, and I, I'm in the same situation as Mr. Holmes, but I don't believe we've ever ratified the appointments as a board. I think we've just publicly announced them.
That's correct.
I want to clarify that.
And I use the word ratified.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
I meant it very specifically that I would re-say it and ratify that I have already put this person on the board, but say it out loud at one of our meetings for purposes of my ratification. Right, but I don't think we've ever said all approved, or yea, or nay, and frankly, I don't think we have the power to undo any one of our appointments.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Commissioner Demilio is not here, Commissioner Siegel or Holmes? Same thing?
Same thing, yeah.
Commissioner Hart?
I'll defer if there's anybody in the eighth ward who's interested, please let me know.
Is there, hey, Jim, is there any, is there a requirement that has to come from, reside in that ward? You get a good person that's not in the ward?
It does not have to be your ward.
I don't think that...
It just has to be your appointment. It does not, yeah, I mean, I've not...
So you can find somebody?
I'd like to find somebody.
Yeah, okay, rather have better, a good person than if you can't find somebody in your own ward and look elsewhere. Fifth ward has a lot of good people, so.
And there may be people, I mean, there may be people on the Environmental Advisory Board who have ideas to the extent that there are folks, and there may be people on the seniors, but I've done that in the past, have looked outside of the ward.
I had, a fourth was resident, Jamie Rushforth was my environmental advisory person, and that was years ago.
Great. Okay, item number 22 is continuation of the citizens' forum for non-agenda items. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on any non-agenda item?
Yes.
Is it non-relate?
Non-agenda items?
Yes, non...
Other comments or not?
It's not, it's four.
Yeah, I think you could.
Sure, come on up.
You get three more minutes.
I have to defer to our solicitor here. Another attorney to my left. What's that?
Mr. Byrne is allowing me to...
Yeah, it says not agenda item, so, but...
I just have a couple of points of clarification with something Ms. Pianzio said. I never asked for party status at the zoning hearing board meeting. I didn't even know what that meant at the time, anyway. And I believe with what Mr. Panoni said, I misunderstood what he was trying to say, so I just want to make sure. The traffic in the Bryn Mawr Medical Specialists Project, 35% is projected to enter via Haverford Road, 65% is projected to enter via Railroad Avenue, so approximately 2/3 of the hundreds of cars every day are going to enter via the Railroad Avenue entrance. Only 1/3 from the Railroad, from the Haverford Road entrance. Are we in agreement on that? Yes, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's surprising, that's surprising to me, but...
And I apologize if I, if I, because my first response was a little misleading, and I thought when I gave the percentages coming from the north and the south on Haverford, I thought I cleared it up. If I wasn't clear, I apologize. I certainly meant to be, and I certainly apologize to the board.
I understood it a different way, I just want to make sure that that's clarified for the record. The majority will enter via Railroad Avenue, the minority via Haverford Road.
Well, I will certainly commit to work with you and the residents to try to come up with mitigation ideas, to try to...
Those speed tables would be a wonderful thing. And I really appreciate, Mr. Holmes, what you said, because really, as citizens, I understand, Mr. Byrne, that you say from the zoning board, sure, we could have appealed the decision, but frankly, we're just regular old residents, and the person who was most affected by the Pets First Veterinary Hospital, and I never did say the word kennel, I said veterinary hospital, the cost to do that is just out of reach for most of us. We don't have the deep pockets that these commercial interests have, and we really count on you guys as our elected officials to look out for our interests, and we count on the planning commission to look out for our interests. We count on the zoning hearing board to look out for them as well. And really, I feel as though the zoning hearing board did not make the appropriate decision in the Pets First case with a non-conforming use on a residential lot. It is adjacent to residential properties, and I would hope that you guys would have looked at it a little bit differently, just thinking about how you would feel if that were your... It's a great business, sure, but located on the side of the lot where it currently is, 10 feet in front of the sewer line, that's all we were saying. Not on the completely other side where the neighbor has been 125 feet away from it, now he's 25 feet away from it. And it's a house his grandfather built that he grew up in. It's not a rental property.
Yeah.
But I also just want to say, this is a really wonderful residential neighborhood, and we feel as though we are being overrun by commercial interests. And every time more and more intensively commercial development gets put in our neighborhood, it becomes less and less desirable from a residential standpoint. And we really would like to feel as though our township is looking out for the residents. We are the heart and soul of this community, and we need to have our interests protected too. We are told millennials want to be able to walk to everything. This residential neighborhood is the only one in Haverford Township that can walk to a supermarket, a movie theater, a post office, a library, a hospital, multiple public parks, and two different train lines. Two different train lines, nowhere else in Haverford Township can you walk to all those amenities from this residential neighborhood. We would really like to see you promote this neighborhood for residential purposes, not just for commercial purposes. So thank you very much for your time. I hope I won't be back again for this, but...
Thank you, Lynn.
If you are, you'll be most welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Lynn, and I would just say that in terms of Bryn Mawr Medical Associates, I was there the other day, I drove in the driveway and I looked at the building, and I thought, you know, what a great historical, although it's not on the historical registers, it's a great structure, beautiful property, and I thought, what a shame that this is gonna be an office building, because, and unfortunately, the market, you know, the market dictates. Somebody clearly didn't think that property could be renovated for office space and reused, so the market dictated. And as the owner of the property, they obviously have certain rights to develop it. So, you know, the question wasn't whether it's gonna be developed, it's, you know, it's gonna be developed, and it's a question of how and when, not if. So I'm not sure, you know, I didn't like the, I don't like it because of the traffic impact.
Exactly.
I think traffic impact, as you addressed, is very significant, and that's, and county line is impossible already, and railroad is a speed thoroughfare, so I concur with all your comments. Pets First, I thought, you know, that was a business that, you know, had been in the township for a long time, you know, hey, you know, I didn't want to see them leave. I think they've been, done a good job in helping, you know, our pets and so forth. But, you know, that plan, although not perfect, is, as far as you know from where we started, is much better than it was, even though, and I think quite frankly, if I lived, I lived there, I'd actually, I'd actually rather have the building adjacent to me than the parking lot, where you get a lot more noise from a parking lot than you do from a side of a building. I think the location of the building actually makes more sense on that side than they. I think Mr. De Silvio finally will realize that when the time comes when he doesn't hear anybody coming, if you're next to the parking lot, you're gonna hear a lot more noise, so...
And that's a good point as well.
Yeah. Do you want to, I don't know whether you...
Completely disregarded.
Yeah.
And they already got a building in three times.
Do you want to come up to the, oh, you want...
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
We, we understand, you know, the decision's been made.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item tonight? Okay, thank you. Now turn to new business. Anybody have a new business? I just have one thing, and that has to do with our comprehensive plan. I know that, I talked to Kelly this afternoon, I know that we have a steering committee that's been formed, and then we have commissioners and ad hoc commissioner committee, I think that was selected by President Wexler at the time, if I'm correct. And they're gonna meet on January 23rd at the fourth Wednesday of every month, so, and that commissioner-ad hoc committee is Demilio, Holmes, Aliva, and Hart. So we'd just like you to participate, I guess, and to the extent that we can get, you know, periodic updates to this board. I think, you know, this comprehensive plan has been something that's been out there for a long period of time, and we kind of went back and forth with Radnor Township, and that didn't work out, and so I think we want to make sure we keep this thing, keep this thing moving and on track. So if there's any, any ad hoc commissioners that do not want to serve, and it's gonna take some time, so please let me know, and we'll make, make some adjustments. Anyone else have any new business? If not, we'll go to Mr. Aliva for his comments and work our way down the row.
I just, just wanted to speak a little bit about Peg Giacimucci, who was quite a force here in, in Haverford Township. He used to shoo me out of, of the AMP in Lanark when, when she worked there, when I was, when I was just a youngster. I've seen her since her retirement, driving people around, helping people, taking people to lunch and helping the elderly, really a great force in this township, and I just decided to see her go, so, but, and I have nothing further.
I'm gonna assume that I can go. I just want to give a reminder, and I probably will a couple more times, just because I think it is something that's gonna be impacting a good number of residents, both in my ward and others. Myself, Commissioner Siegel, and Commissioner Lewis are hosting PennDOT on February 20th at 7:00 in this room. PennDOT, as many people know, is planning construction on the Ardmore Avenue Bridge. It'll follow a similar path to what happened with the College Avenue Bridge, hopefully without all the delays, as the lessons have been learned. But this will be an information session where they'll give a presentation on what the plan is, where they are in the process. Hopefully, they'll have some more certain dates for residents, and it'll also be an opportunity for a question and answer session. We'll tape it and we'll put it up on YouTube, but obviously, if you are capable of attending, it's, again, it's February 20th at 7:00 in this room, and I encourage all the residents to attend. And I, just briefly, quickly, just to comment, you know, the, the, the vote we took tonight regarding the school and the Brookline School, we're merely just taking the property, and it'll be used for the public good. It's something that was a school, and it will be used for the public good, but we're gonna, we have, we have the opportunity to do something good at that location, and we'll certainly welcome the public's input as to what kind of good we should do. So I look forward to working with everybody on the board on that, and then the public in a discussion that, since we're taking over the property, won't have any bad, bad options. Every option we have will be a good one. It'll either be open space, it'll be a library building, it'll be something else, but it'll be something that preserves that area and doesn't, leaves it open for the public and the neighbors in that, in that community. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you, I just have one thing, and it actually is, I propose the comments about the two developments and our meeting last week. Many people don't realize that what we voted on tonight is the planning commission, and a lot of what the concerns were actually are items... a lot of what the concerns were actually are items that are voiced at the zoning board, so that they're different issues for different boards. That said, the zoning board, the Planning Commission, and our other boards and committees are very important. We now televise the zoning board, we televise the Planning Commission so residents can see them. Last week, we voted on appointments to those and other boards that provide, in those cases, quasi-judicial functions, and in others, advisory components to this board and the township. They're important, and the interview process, which the majority of this board was able to attend, some members were not, was particularly interesting and important this year. Every year, we get exceptional candidates, I think this year, they continue to be more exceptional every year, causing us to make difficult votes that are not necessarily votes against someone as much as they are votes for someone. At times, it means replacing people who have served well, honorably, and it's a difficult vote. So I want to just thank everyone who has, who applied, for the people who did not get appointed, or were not reappointed. That's a reflection on the quality of the candidates and not on the individuals, and I hope that the people will find a way to remain involved, whether it's as observers, whether it's participating unofficially on different boards, but those boards are important, and we took that process very seriously, and, you know, we've made some changes, we will continue to do what we hope is the best for the township, and I thank everyone on this board and everyone who participated from the community for trying to help this township.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner McGarrett?
Okay, quite a few things here. President Fran McGarrett reports that the Grange had a great year with their annual party, their trains were fabulous this year, they really did a great job, and also, the money that the men turned in, I don't have an exact account, but it was substantial compared to other years. Also, not only the train money that came in, also the tour guys brought in some money, extra money that they usually, that isn't usually there, we had more people there, thank God, and the gift shop brought in more money. So that's, that's the report on the Grange. Now, Chief Viola can tell me if I'm right on this. Tomorrow night, we're honoring our firemen at the crack, at 7:00 PM, is that right, Chief?
Correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so if you want to support our volunteer, no paid firemen, all volunteers, they'll be up there, would appreciate anyone to come just to say thank you very much for the work you do and the job you do. They're gonna be up there from 7:00 to about 8:30, and if you can't make it, but want to send a donation to the fire company that they belong to, or any fire company, the fire companies would be more than happy if you did that, because that helps them get a lot of different things, which John can explain, that we use equipment to go down to the public works yard and do all kinds of demonstrations, and keep the younger fellows that are just learning into what it's really all about. So the Toys for Tots that was held at the Brookline Fire Company, we had some young ladies from Lenark that brought some wonderful singers from the Haverford High School down to the Toys for Tots at Brookline, and we had a fabulous year, better year than we ever had. I've been involved in that, I guess, 15 years, and John's nice enough to help us with the fire company and get all the toys in there, and believe me, we had more toys than the guy could haul away from, so. That's, it was just a great year for the Toys for Tots, and Maureen told me from Ridley that we give more here in Haverford Township than any municipality around. And finally, I'd just like to go back to the Brookline School agenda for a second, and get into not basically that issue, but the school district, and the people who are out here on the corners, and you see, a lot of them are elderly people, and basically, they've asked for a small increase, they haven't received anything. I personally would lead them out on a strike to get more money, but I'm gonna tell you something, they wouldn't go. You know why they wouldn't go? Because they care more about those kids than anybody, and they do a great job, and they're there day after day, doesn't matter if it's raining, or snowing, or whatever. So consider that, or send a word back to the school district, that they should take care of these people, they don't make a lot of money, and they deserve more than they're making. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, just a couple items. On Tuesday, January 22nd, at 6:30, the library will be screening a movie, Catching the Sun. It deals with global warming, it's a, the movie is sponsored by Haverford's EAC. And then I just wanted to reiterate what Commissioner McCloskey said, they took the first step tonight in acquiring the Brookline School, township is acquiring it to keep it a community asset, there's been no decisions made on what's going to happen with it, we certainly need to consider putting the library there, but nothing's gonna be done without a lot of community input. Once the building is acquired, we'll certainly have public meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wexler?
All I have is, next Thursday night is the Hilltop Civic Association, which also doubles as my public meeting for constituents. Some of the items that people are asking about are new developments, subdivision at Elston and Peach Lane, and 1417 Fairview Road, so if you're interested in those, please come to the Hilltop Civic Association, next Thursday at the Bon Air Fire Company at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. I just, one reminder to everybody, next Monday will be the 34th Annual Observation of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and I encourage everybody who has that day off, every student who's enjoying that day off, to take advantage of what that day has become and what it stands for, and to try to spend that day in some type of service to the community, service to the country, service to your local community, but something to remember, a great American leader, who we may all forget, was only 39 years old when he was assassinated, and had managed in those 39 short years to do extraordinary things for our country, and to have lived far beyond his death, and I think it's very important for all of us in America to remember him and honor him next Monday by at least thinking about him, and maybe trying to think about more service to others. So that is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. I have nothing additional. Commissioner McCloskey already mentioned our public meeting on Wednesday, February 20th with PennDOT. I urge everyone to attend that, I think it'll be informative, and hopefully, we can get PennDOT to move a little faster on the second round here with the Ardmore Avenue Bridge than the first round. With that, I would entertain a motion to.
Motion ordered.
Pretty sure that they're gonna say they're. Second? Stand adjourned. Thank you.